Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Crescent City City Council Meeting, our regular council meeting for Tuesday, February 19th. We were just in closed session, and is there anything to report out of closed session?
We had no final action, so nothing.
Okay, there was no final. Thank you. Okay, so we'll call the meeting in the order. Would you please take role?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gastinow?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Councilmember Shalong?
Here.
Mayor Protem Holly?
Here.
And Mayor Ania?
Here. Would you please stand while Mayor Protem Holly leads us to the pledge?
Okay, ready, begin. Under allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we will just have a very short council meeting. We just have a little bit of business, and then we will adjourn to a joint session of the City Council and the Planning Commission. So first is acknowledgements, and we have none. Next is the consent calendars, item one through, one, two, and three. Any?
Move to approve.
Move to approves or second?
Second.
Been moved second. Would you take the role, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Gastinow?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Holly?
Yes.
And Mayor Ania?
Yes. Under reports and presentations, there are none. This now is the public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Not however that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone or out of order will be put on, not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name, and if you're a city or county resident for the record, and public comment is limited to three minutes. And after we adjourn the council meeting and go to a joint session with the Planning Commission and the City Council, if you have questions about the Beachfront Park, that would probably be the best time to ask them after the presentation. But under general public comments, does anyone want to speak under public comment? Yes.
Donna Westphal, I live in the city, and I'd like to mention three or four things. One, to recognize that January 27th was International Holocaust Day. The day of remembrance was chosen by the United Nations, marking the anniversary of the liberation in 1945 of the Auschwitz Death Camp, where the Nazi ovens were capable of killing 6,000 people a day. Second, the state of Kansas is the first state in the nation to introduce House Bill 2372 describing the harm of water fluoridation. If passed, Kansas will become the first fluoride-free state in America. Third, about sewer rates, in 2007, I paid $23 for a copy of all those addresses connected to sewer. The list was inaccurate, and even though I've requested a corrected copy many times, none were forthcoming. So I'd like to know if I can get a current list at a discount. And five, Palm Springs is doing a $67 million expansion on their sewer system and will be raising rates to $31 a month. Our California states average for monthly sewer rates is $40 a month. Crescent City's about $70 a month, so we're one of the highest in the state, just like our tipping fees at the dump are some of the highest in the state. And I understand you're thinking of raising sewer rates again, so I will have more to say on this topic at the next council meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
Harleen Cooper, since we, house is packed, I thought I'd take a moment here to bring to your attention about an important consideration for this, regarding safety in this community. Caltrans is currently reviewing a draft environmental impact report to enable big trucks, STA8 trucks, to go on Highway 199 and 197. And we all know how dangerous that road is to drive, and now they want to put even bigger trucks in. And instead of widening the road adequately, their EIR says that they are not going to. They are taking safety exceptions. How dangerous are these exceptions that they're taking? I wanted to know, and a lot of other people who live in Gaskill wanted to know. And we hired Smith Engineering, one of the best names in the industry, to do a report on the safety merits of this project. And his conclusion is that it's, there's going to be very many more accidents. They are not widening the road enough. They even say in their EIR that they have considered other safer alternatives, but they're too expensive, so our lives are worth nothing to them. And some of you said, well, if I saw something that said it wasn't safe, I'd have to reconsider. Well, this is it. And you cannot widen the road enough and cut into those slopes. That's what the EIR says, because of geologic instability. And so it's only theoretical, as to if you, you ought to look at this report. I have an information sheet for you, and you all ought to sign the petition against it and reconsider your position, because the economic studies show that it wasn't a necessary project for economic development, and it's going to cause accidents and it's going to risk the water quality of the Smith River. And here's an information sheet for you, and it shows where you can Google that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment before we move on? Okay. We'll close public comment. We'll adjourn temporarily to the Housing Authority. And would you please call the Housing Authority Board to order?
Yes, sir.
Rule call.
Director Murray?
Here.
Director Shalong?
Here.
Director Gastinow?
Here.
Vice Chair Holly?
Here.
And Chairman Ania?
I'm here, thank you. Any public comment on the Crescent City Housing Authority? Seeing none, we'll move for the consent calendar for approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Would you please call the role, please?
Yes. Director Gastinow?
Yes.
Director Shalong?
Yes.
Director Murray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Holly?
Yes.
And Chairman Ania?
Yes, thank you. Under Housing Director's Report, there is none. There are no public hearings scheduled. We have no continuing business, no new business. We'll adjourn to the next Housing Authority meeting will be March 18th at 6:00 PM. We'll reconvene now back to the City Council meeting. I'm sorry. Did you have a report, Megan?
No.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. All right. Now we'll adjourn to the Crescent City Successor Agency, to the Redevelopment Agency. So I'll call that meeting to order, and would you please take role?
Director Gastinow?
Here.
Director Murray?
Here.
Director Shalong?
Here.
Vice Chairman Holly?
Here.
And Chairman Ania?
I'm here, thank you. Is there any public comment on the Crescent City Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency? Seeing none, we'll move for the consent agenda for approval of the warrants and the regular meeting minutes. Is there someone to approve?
Move for approval.
Been moved for approval, second? Was there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in seconded. Would you please take role, please, or hold the vote?
Certainly. Director Shalong?
Yes.
Director Gastinow?
Yes.
Director Murray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Holly?
Yes.
And Chairman Ania?
Yes, thank you. There's no executives report, there's no business items, there's no public hearing scheduled. Under new business, there is an item. Factors two, it's Consider and Approve Resolution 213-03 of the Successor Agency to the Dissolved Redevelopment Agency of the City of Crescent City, approving a recognized obligation payment schedule for a period of July through December of 2013. And that is attached to our... Well, there's a memo here from Mr. McDonald. Did you want to speak on that, Mr. McDonald, or Mr. Plotzel?
I'll just have Mr. McDonald give a short presentation.
Sure.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
The ROPS form is the same one that we've been going on. I think this would have been room numeral five, but they've changed the number and set, so now they're 1314A for the first half of the fiscal year, 1314, and then 1314B for the second half. So this is the first half, which starts this July to next December. The first resolution is the ROPS, which includes the administrative portion, and the second one is a separate resolution just on the administrative portion.
Thank you.
So, real quickly, is this the same thing that we approved at our last meeting contingent on the Oversight Board's approval?
I don't know if it was actually prepared yet at that last meeting. It's the topic that we were discussing at the last one, that the Oversight Board saw it last Wednesday. They've approved it once, if we approve it tonight, then both bodies have approved it, and then we could submit it to the state.
Oh, we just approved that they could approve it before we approved it?
Yes.
Technically, yeah. It was kind of, it was the only way we could make the March 1st deadline of this new form with their, with timeframes.
Thank you. Thank you. Was there any council comments?
Because at these new forms, you need a magnifying glass to read them.
We do. That's true.
I'll move to approve Resolution 201303 of the Successor Agency to the Dissolved Redevelopment Agency for the City of Crescent City, approving the recognized obligation payment schedule, ROPS 1314A, for the period of July to December 2013 pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 34177I.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in seconded. Would you please hold the vote?
Yes, sir. Director Murray?
Yeah.
Director Shalong?
Yes.
Director Gastinow?
Yes.
Vice Chair Holly?
Yes.
And Chairman Ania?
Yes, thank you. And the second, the second resolution?
I will move to approve Resolution 201304, adopting a proposed administrative budget for the period of July through December 2013 pursuant to Health and Safety Code Section 34177J.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in seconded. Would you please hold the vote?
Yes, sir. Director Shalong?
Yes.
Director Gastinow?
Yes.
Director Murray?
Yes.
Vice Chair Holly?
Yes.
And Chairman Ania?
Yes, thank you. We will now adjourn the Crescent City Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency, and now we're back to the City Council meeting, and we have no public hearings tonight, no continuing business, and no new business. And on council, City Council items, we'll hold that until after our joint meeting, and we'll come back to that. So now I'm going to adjourn the City Council meeting, and we will shortly have a meeting with the City Council and City Planning Commission in just about a minute here.
I don't think you can actually adjourn it.
You know what? I'm not going to adjourn. I'm just going to hold off the council, thank you, hold off the rest of the council meeting on City Council items until we finish with our Planning Commission meeting, our Joint Planning Commission. A joint City Council, City Planning Commissioner meeting, and it's noted that all five council members are here. And Mr. Henskor, do you want to open the Planning Commission meeting?
Senator Burke, would you call the role for our Planning Commission, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Green?
Present.
And Chairman Henskor?
Here.
Thank you. Our new business tonight is a presentation and discussion of the final design concept for the Beachfront Park Master Plan. Mr. Plotzel?
Mayor Ania and members of the City Council, and Chair Henskor, members of the Planning Commission, good evening. Jean Palazzo, we're very excited about this presentation this evening. The unfortunate part is our consultant got delayed in getting here to Crescent City this evening, so Mr. Taylor will be doing the presentation tonight, and he's going to walk you through, you know, the process that we've, what has brought us to this point, and walk you through the final design concepts of the Beachfront Park Master Plan. So I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Taylor.
Hi, however, I think you're fortunate to be able to hear my presentation.
Does that mean we don't have to pay the consultant as much?
That fee goes to me.
The plan will speak for itself. They did, they did a really good job in putting this together.
So, I'll start out with a little background to how we got to the final plan. Back in 2011, we received some funding on the Community Development Block grant to put together a master plan for the park. We realized that we really need a plan to get some cohesive and compatible development for the park over the next, we're probably looking at the next 15 to 20 years. As the park gets developed further along, you're going to have overlap of these uses, so you want to make sure everything flows and works together. So after we received the funding, we put out an RFP, and we received about three RFPs. We sat down in-house, and we decided on RRM Design Group for the designers of this project. They had a lot of experience in designing coastal properties and coastal parks. We felt they were kind of the stronger group. So after we got them on board, we started the public process. Keep this in mind, that the final design that you see, it came out of the public process, came out of the public input, and you're not always going to please everybody on these projects. We had the first public meeting, we had about 40 folks, and you had 40 different ideas of what you can have in a park. So August 13th, 2012, we had, we had the first public meeting, and again, like I said, there's approximately 40 individuals. Earlier in that day, they held stakeholder meetings, so those folks, such as soccer, Marine Mammal Center, city staff, you know, people that directly work in the park just about every day, or have large groups, they kind of got their input, and that, later that night, had the public hearing. And at that first meeting, they kind of threw it out there and got ideas from folks, what they liked to see in the park, and most of you were in attendance, so you know how that went along. Then on October the 8th, we had the second public meeting, and that, that meeting, they brought back two separate plans, and I'll go over them in the PowerPoint presentation. So the two separate alternative plans came about from the first public meeting, that input, and then those two plans were provided, and then more input was taken from those plans, and the, kind of the favorable aspects of both those plans were merged together to come up with this final plan. And those two plans, we had the recreation focus, and that was to maximize the recreational use of the site, or promoting events that would draw people to Crescent City, and the transformative focus, which was the strength and connectivity between Beachfront Park and downtown Crescent City while providing for a broad range of recreational flexible events. And so not all of those, all those ideas that were brought forth, not all of those were favorable. So people, if you remember at the meeting, were asked, they were given the red stickers and the green stickers, and if you liked something, you put the green sticker, and if you didn't like, you put a red one. If you really didn't like it, you put your big red one on there. So although a lot of these ideas were thrown out there, not a lot of the ideas were accepted by the majority of the folks. And so that's kind of the, that's, you know, for the skill level, having an outside designer comes into play, and how you take all those things, the people, that the community wants, the community needs, incorporate them into the park, and how is that community going to be best served by that, and also how is that going to serve folks that are coming into the area? One of the other things we wanted for the, for the master plan, so we put out the request for proposal, and I was, part of the request proposal, we asked for, and I just kind of give you some insight on how the plan came to get off, so we asked that the master plan embodies vision, grand design, connectivity for the park, and passive and active recreation interface, because that's important, you know? How are all the different uses in the park going to work together? Because on one hand, you have, for example, you have somebody picnicking over here, and you have the soccer games or something else going on the other side, so you want to, you want to have some separation. You want people to be able to enjoy the park. You want to be able to enjoy kind of the quiet, look at the ocean view, and also have your real active recreation and sporting events down there. Having said that, I'm going to move to the PowerPoint presentation. So again, we have the two public meetings, the visioning and programming, and then the presentation review of the design alternatives. And also, I'd mentioned the stakeholders interviews. The two design alternatives, again, we have the recreational events focus and the transformative focus. So as you can see, each one had a little bit different ideas. The transformative focus had some different layout on the roads, for example. Recreational focus, again, you know, different design on the fields and how, you know, their uses interface. So the, when they presented these two alternative plans, then that's when folks had their, their say again, and they kind of chose, well, hey, I like this, or I don't like this, we don't think that's going to work. So again, here's kind of a list of some of the most highly favored elements from each concept. The recreation and events focus, amphitheater was big. A lot of folks thought the amphitheater was a good idea. And the idea for the amphitheater, and we'll go into a little, little more, also hopefully it could be a draw to get more people, have more events, get more people to come to the community and come down and use the park. Flexibility for events is important. Open playing fields, a lot of folks wanted to kind of keep that open and have the open park and the larger field area. Dog park was huge. There was a lot of support for the dog park. And if you recall, we had even, back when we did the town hall meetings a few years ago, a lot of folks back then wanted the dog park, so it's kind of nice to see these things start to move forward. Estuary Crossing, some folks wanted to be able to get across El Creek, kind of go across from the park rather than go around to the existing bridge. Roller Derby was another big one, and then, as I showed you on the last slide, you get the, kind of the road system, folks wanted less roads. A lot of folks didn't like the roads going through the park. When you put roads through the park, it cuts the park into sections, and it makes it a little more difficult. You don't have the flow that you normally would. And transformative, you have the Town Square concept, people really liked that. The connection to downtown, distribution of parking, elevated How Park East, and that's, I'll go over all the different elements as we go through the plan here. Expanded Marine Mammal Center was thrown out there, a kayak rental site, and event And so again, that came out of the public process, you know, that's what the community told us that they wanted. So the purpose of the master plan, obviously, it's a roadmap, a guide to future improvements. Again, this is probably, this is a 15 to 20-year plan, you know, and obviously, this isn't going to get built tomorrow, but the idea is, we take it in phases, and you start implementing those phases, you know? One idea is the dog park, we have a lot of community support for the dog park, there's probably some outside funding for the dark park, so that's something, and we could probably use some city crews maybe on some of the work, so that, those elements could probably start going pretty quick. Some of the larger features in the park will take a little bit longer, and obviously, funding, as it comes along, they'll get, they'll get built. And obviously, it represents a big vision for the park. Now, this is, this is the grand design. This is, you know, what we like to see for the community, what we, what we can have. Definitely, this plan can come to fruition. It can be built. It's not pie in the sky, and what we don't want, we don't want just to be a plan that just sits on the shelf like a lot of other plans we've had. It's an important tool to help acquire funding, obviously. One of the ideas for some of the stuff, we can probably go to Coastal Conservancy or some of these other groups that help fund these coastal projects, so there is money available for some of these things. Usually implemented over many years, like we said, it's probably a 15 to 20-year plan, and it's a compromise that balances the community's needs. Again, you have 40 individuals, you're going to get 40 different ideas, and I'm sure tonight you'll have plenty of folks come up here and tell you what they like and they don't like about the park. So again, there's the master plan. This is kind of the final version that we're bringing forward, and so from here, I'm just going to break it down into sections of the park. And so here's, the new, you can see the new roads, obviously, are in the solid lines, and then existing roads. And so the idea, one, you can see how Play Street kind of gets shifted down, and again, that kind of keeps from cutting through the center of the park there. Also gives you more of a nice coastal drive that comes around and flows well through the park, and you can also see it connects back, you know, we proposed opening How Park all the way through again, get folks back out to Front Street, and back to the lighthouse and the pier and the other amenities we have down there. Again, this is pedestrian circulation, and one of the things we asked for in the RFP was we wanted connectivity within the park. We don't have a very well-developed trail system in the park. As you can see now, this, you can basically walk anywhere within the park, it's accessible. You can see going through the center, and we'll look at it some more, you just have a grand parkway and walkway that goes right through, and takes you all the way across the park, basically, you can get to anything in the park. So this is the east end detail, and again, a lot of this came out of the public meetings. I don't know if I get this now to work here. So I'll just start kind of the bottom here. This is the How Park East. If everybody's familiar with How Park, the west side is that lower park that sits right on the coast. We've made some improvements there over the last few years. They've been well-received. It's, it gets a lot of use down there now. It's a nice place to be. So the idea is, we take that kind of area existing in the park now, where that gravel parking spot is, that's really not being utilized, and turn that again into more of a park area and picnicking, and more of a passive use, since you're right there on the El Creek Estuary, and you're right there on the beach. And it's just, it's a nice, it's a beautiful spot. There's not many places you can go in California, or probably on the whole west coast, that has the amount of space that we have on the waterfront, and just the amenities that we can have on the waterfront, and the accessibility. Kind of just move back from there. Again, you can see how the road is dropped, you know, currently Play Street kind of cuts across this way, across Kids Town, and dropping it down into the Roundabout. These are more picnic, covered picnic shelters. Obviously, in this plan, we lose the one that we have now, and this allows you to have more group activities. We get a lot of, you get a lot of weddings and parties and different things in the park. This actually expands on that and give you a greater area. I keep losing my thing here. And then another kind of open meeting area here, and just play area, if you have kids there, you're doing your barbecues. And you can kind of start to see you have a separation here, here, between the active and the passive, so over here, more of your picnicking uses, and you come across the other side, you have Kids Town, and a shaded area around Kids Town was left purposely for expansion of Kid Town. If everyone expand on that and make it a larger play area, you know, obviously, we'll need to probably make some improvements soon. Again, you have more of your active recreation, you have basketball courts, folks wanted, you have bocce ball courts, volleyball courts, and your horseshoe pits are moved again, you have all your more active recreation uses up here. These represent more picnic areas, kind of covered stalls. And the nice thing you see over here is a lot of this parking's been changed. A lot of the parking's been taken away from the swimming pool, moved out onto the street here, added a bus lane. Retain the parking here. We had some comment from staff that, you know, this provides the best ADA access for the pool, so we retain that. The nice thing you can see here, though, anybody who's walked this coastal trail along here, is you come down the trail, you enter into a parking lot. You know, this is part of the entire coastal trail for the state. This is our section of that trail that goes from border to border. And, and the nice thing is now that you have that separation, so when you come down, you really have the feel that you're on a coastal trail. You have the separation for the parking lot, you're not walking down the trail into a parking lot, and you kind of lose. lot, you're not walking down the trail into a parking lot, and you kind of lose, you know, that sense of where the trail is. And obviously, that's part of the connectivity also, it takes you back, you know, you take that trail all the way out, and eventually, that trail will, will connect into the Harbor Boat Basin. This was kind of thrown out there, the covered walkway to the, from the cultural center to the swimming pool, and that's probably dependent on what future holds for the cultural center, if use has changed there, we'll see. And also, keep in mind too, you know, this is the overall plan and design for the park, this is kind of the macro view, as we get focused in on some of these areas that we want to build, then we'll obviously, we'll get more detailed plans and more detailed specs on how that's going to look. It's kind of more focused in view. So this is more the Howe Park East detail, let's kind of went over all of that. And it had a little parking area here, so we, one thing we wanted was accessibility for everything in the park. Again, here's the town square and amphitheater detail, this was a lot, had a lot of feedback from the community that they wanted an event center, they wanted the amphitheater. And the idea is, hopefully, this can also serve as a bit of an economic engine for the community, if we can, maybe that'll, when we get an events coordinator, or somebody that can, you know, pull in more events, it's not hard to figure out the 4th of July car show, those are big draws for us, and they bring a lot of business into the community. And the idea here is you have the, this is your town square idea here, so you can see the separation, so you could have more community events here, if you wanted to do, you know, little festivals, or you had your farmer's markets, that type of thing down here. One of the interesting things, if you remember, recall, I showed the roller derby on there, and it kind of turned out that this square, this circle here actually almost mirrors the, the dimensions of a roller derby court. And that's the one thing that I thought the designers did very well at, was to incorporate all the different needs and all the things that folks wanted, and they kind of found some creative ways to incorporate them into this plan. One thing I'll go back on, and so that, and so if you look in the center here, this would be like a vendor parking area, so it kind of replaces your vendor slab, it's a better location for the use. Again, you kind of, you have your pavilion area, then you have your amphitheater, so you could have probably smaller events, like community concerts here, or maybe you have larger events, and then you can actually, you know, use this whole area in here, and you can probably, you can park your vendors out on the sides here, expand it or contract it how you need to. The lower end here, this is more of an overview platform, and this would be for a public art, some type of public art down here, somebody suggested maybe having something that showed the heights of the tsunami that came in. The idea here is kind of bring the beach, more the beach into the park, get more use out of it, and better access, because right now, anybody's been down there, you know, there's zero access to the beach. You have to go all the way down to Howe Park to get access to the beach. So the idea here is you have, these are handicap ramps, handicapped accessible ramps to get down to the beach, to utilize the beach. And again, you bring in an extensive G Street down here, and it gives you a better flow of parking coming through the park, and more entrances, exits into the park. And this is kind of a little detail of what the amphitheater could look like. Now, I mentioned earlier that there could be, there's some funding out there, I have actually contacted the Coastal Conservancy, and the amphitheater is something that actually falls within their, their purview, that's something that they could actually fund. And so if this does go forward, and this is something that the, the community wants as we go through this process, we probably get, where's a little bit of money left over, we would look at getting a better detailed plan for this, that would allow us to go after This kind of gives you an idea, I should have where the vendor area was, where the vendor parking. And again, kind of a, another span of the, what it could possibly, you know, would, would look like at a more detailed level. And for the, I'd add on here for the backdrop here, this would not be a permanent structure, this is something that would be seasonal, obviously with our weather here, we couldn't, one, you don't want to take away the visual, the vision, their visual access to the water. So this is something that, in different communities, they have, where they actually, they can put it up, you know, for as long as the event happens, and then they take it down, and they store it away, whether our storage is in a stage or at a different location, that would be, you know, we would work that out. The west end detail, so obviously, soccer's big in the park, a lot of folks like to go down there and have larger events, so we retained the soccer fields. Again, as I mentioned, dog park was pretty high on the list, so this is the dog park area up in here. This area is left open, and it kind of left this for disc golf, but obviously, you know, we have disc golf throughout the park, so nothing this plan says all this other stuff's going to go away, you know, we're just figuring out ways to incorporate everything into the park. Marine mammal center's left in place. And one of the nice features I liked on this, this is a, like a snack shack area and restrooms, so you can have your vending for the parks here, the soccer's pretty big on that, and they just give them a central location to access all the fields. I think right now, they kind of set up a tent kind of off to the side, and it's a little out of the way. Again, you look at the, as I pointed out earlier, kind of the, the grand walkway through the park, that takes you all the, you get access across the entire park, you have the connectivity, you know, trailed all the way through the park now. This is moving the existing maintenance shed that's there along Stamps Way, kind of taking it out of the park, putting it next to the treatment plant, so that would store a lot of your parks equipment, your lawnmower, and that type of thing. And also, the treatment plant, they said that they might have a little, some use for it also, so it serves a little bit of a dual purpose. Kind of an expansion on Howe Park West, you have some more, kind of an upper tier of picnicking area. Kayak rental possibly out here, that's what this was for, so, and they put it out there in that location, they felt that had the best access, if somebody actually wanted to launch something, you can actually walk right to the water from there. So again, it's an overview of the park. I can't stress enough, like I said, it's, it's born of the community's input, it's the grand vision and design for the park, and I really, I strongly feel that this, a lot of the aspects of this can be built here within probably the next five or six years. Obviously, some of this, you're probably looking 20 years out, and as I said, as funding goes. But features such as the dog park, soccer fields, a lot of the trails, you know, we have the ability to do some of this in-house, there's a lot of support, I think there's outside funding for some of these items, and again, some of the things such as the amphitheater, we can go forward and acquire grant funding, get some of these things constructed. And I'm not put too much on this yet, because we haven't quite worked this out, and this was, one of the things we asked for in the contract was a phasing plan for the park, which is kind of associated with costs, you know, what's realistically, what can you do And that's about it, and I'm sure I probably didn't do it as justice as the designer could have, given their input on it, but entertain any questions.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions before I open it for the public comment? We'll come back, we can come back to that afterwards.
I, I just have one.
Go ahead.
Well, I, on the surface, I absolutely love it, I think it looks fabulous. I just have a question about the location for the MONG, MONG families that they play, is there another spot that they would have available to them? You know, they play over in...
There were, there's volleyball courts.
It's a different kind of game, I think they need more room, so that was one, one group, I think, got left out.
Right, maybe, yeah, I don't know if it represented them at the public meetings, but also, keep in mind, a lot of these use conserve dual uses. I mean, that's kind of what they do, they have an area now that they use, I'm not sure if it gets well utilized right now, it's not well-developed. But, I mean, you can always find room, I mean, soccer doesn't happen year-round, you know, soccer is only part of the year.
Okay, so I just wouldn't hate to see them excluded in the vision.
Yeah, the idea is not to, we don't want to exclude anybody, the idea of this is to try and include everybody in the community and get those uses, and, and it's flexible, you know, the park's flexible now, you have multiple uses for different areas of the park, and that, that's not going to change.
Just for the record, they're not excluded.
Okay.
I, I just had a couple of things.
Sure.
I don't remember the covered walkway between the cultural center and the pool, but I don't know if it would be a good use of funding, because they seem to be two separate uses, but like you said, if the cultural center changes in the future, maybe it would make sense. But my, my main thought was, we, you know, a lot of us talked about how we wanted the park to be integrated into downtown, and, and kind of, you know, the front street theme and the beach front, front park theme, as, I don't see here where they kind of talked about integration into the downtown.
I think the short answer on that was, I think when they did the report cards, it wasn't very well-received, as they put on there. I think the idea from, from staff's perspective is, is that one of our next steps, we'll be looking at creating a downtown master plan, as we'll probably look at how we can get a little bit more connectivity. It's, it's an easy thing to say, it's more of a difficult thing to actually put into practice, and so that's something we'll continue to look at.
Yes, Mr. Hawley?
You know, one, one thing that, that I've heard, Mr. Weirwood, he gave the presentations on the Front Street project, for example, was the possibility of, of themes that go throughout the park. I, I think they were going to do climate themes or geological themes, something that went from deep sea to shallow sea to shoreline, remember that whole thing?
On Front Street, yes, yes.
Is that, is that something that's still being thought about, or, I thought that was a good idea, you'd walk down that walkway that goes through the middle of the park, and you'd see these things, and they'd be educational as you made the walk, and so...
And that's something that could easily be, be added into the park, but again, like I said, this is the overall grand design, master plan for the park. As we get down to the, to, like I said, you get down to implementing these things, obviously, when you look at the dog park now, it's an open field, we get down to design that dog park and building it, there's going to be elements built into that, it's not going to look like that. So as we get down more to the fine tuning, then we can definitely look at adding some of those things in. And obviously, for us, we had, you know, a fairly small budget for creating this plan, and actually, we were, I think we were quite fortunate, probably because of the, the state of the economy, that we were able to draw some kind of larger firms that were actually interested in even taking this project on.
Yeah, I seem to think there was more of a request for public art than just the one little spot also.
Right, and arts, that's, again, something that, you know, we will build in the park as we go along.
Well, why don't we just get a bunch of people, a bunch of artists, and a bunch of contractors, and start working?
Yeah, well, again, that's why we have a master plan, though we don't want to just start throwing things really nearly out into the park.
All right, well, I'm going to open it to public comments, and to comment on, on our master plan that we have before us now, and then I'll return it back up to the council on the body question. Would anyone like, would you like to speak on the concept here? Feel free to come on up, come on up.
Do we take members?
No, just, I'll call you in just a second.
Yeah, three minutes.
Jesse Salisbury, Crescent City. I'm rather astounded at what isn't included in this, and it seems like everything is taken out of it. Public input, I'm really not seeing any of our public input. The ramps, that was public input on both of the maps that we drew, I kind of would have liked to have seen what we asked for, and then what you brought, what was, not you, because it wasn't you. Also, I'd like my money back, because I think we got really ripped off on this deal. All of our ideas were weeded out, half of them are weeded out, the first plan that they brought back, and 99% of them have been weeded out on this plan. We were asking for cheap ideas that we were able to implement with the money that we have. If you look at this plan, and you look at the park now, it's slash and burn, everything is gone except for the pool, the cultural center, and Kids Town, everything else is just taken out and redone and replaced. The community, we told, we told them what they, what we wanted, but they obviously didn't listen. I've been to a lot of these meetings, and, you know, we usually don't get what we ask for, but this is, this is, was just atrocious, and, and like you said...
Jesse, can you be more specific when you say 99% isn't in here?
Well, I don't, I mean, the MONG are gone, we asked for the MONG to have an area there, that's where they ended up putting the, the amphitheater, we asked for the amphitheater over here. Well, the only thing that I really see in any of the, either of the two plans, that the people, we went up there and we drew our plans out, what we wanted for the park, is the, is the ramps to go from, from the parking area to the beach. Everything else, I mean, they took out, they, it looks like they've taken out Ron's Frisbee Golf, which people are all the time doing that.
No, disc golf is there.
Yeah, but it's, it's now squeezed into a little area over here.
No, that, that's, that, that's just additional, the same ones are still there. The same ones are still there, the soccer fields, they're all there.
Yeah, nothing's being removed.
Nothing's being removed.
Okay, well, I was looking at the map, and it just seemed that it had all been squished over into this area. The, I don't know what this other, the other road is here, the double, thank you.
Thank you. All of these, all of these items that are in here were asked for by the public, I attended those meetings, they're asked for, everything can't be in there, but a lot of this stuff is in there, and you have a comment, sir? Come on up. You have to come up to the mic, please, and give us your name.
My name is Michael Hever, and I would like to thank Ms. Mary and Ms. Long for showing up to meetings, for coming to the building when we had a little meeting up front. I've got a list here, and I'm going to run down it through real quick. The disc golf, there are people come from all over the country, and literally all of the world, I've seen them, and I've talked to them, I'm down there four times a day, don't mess with it. And you keep talking connectivity, there's nothing to connect to, downtown's a ghost town, concentrate on downtown, there are more empty buildings down there than anywhere I've been. Who are the stakeholders I keep hearing about, these mysterious people? What happened to the bridge across the creek if you're going to extend the coastal trail? That was the, excuse me, the perfect aspect of it, that has vanished. Again, connectivity, connect to what? There's nothing downtown except empty buildings. The dog park, we've become the orphan of the world again. The issue with the dog park was going to be in the corner, that it's now a cluster. The reason that we pushed for the dog park, because within four blocks of that area, there are, I've counted, there's 25 dogs in my buildings, there's 32 dogs two blocks away, and there are people who come from all over town. And be careful where you step, that's because that was the reason for the dog park in a certain area, because it connects with Play Town, with the beach, there's an existing picnic area there across the street, gentleman I don't see tonight pointed out that you could sit at the picnic area, turn your kids loose and turn your dogs loose, because what happens now is they come up the drive, they stop next to the restroom, the kids go one way, the dogs go the other, and like I said, watch where you step. If you, if you continue this road building in this park, you're going to turn it into a worse racetrack than it already is. It goes on 24 hours a day. The only improvement in the road is to continue the one past, bring it out and dump it out down towards the treatment center. Lose the roundabouts, and the thing I haven't seen around here is any consideration for the two guys that have to maintain that park right now. There's no aspect of maintenance to any of these features anywhere, and those guys are getting their butts kicked down there daily. And I'd like to thank Doug Plack for the enforcement he's able to provide, because there is no more. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Kat Conrad, I'm very new to the area. I think that's a really beautiful master plan, I really like the town square and the amphitheater, I think, like you said, there could be a lot of seasonal activities. You know, I'm involved with North Coast Roller Derby, and we do bring in a lot of revenue with that, and if we had our own skate park in area, I think that it would enhance that, you know, so I just would, you know, I think that all dog owners need to be responsible, you know, and pick up after themselves, like, when I lived in Humboldt, there's, and walked through the Arcata Parks, there's a lot of, you know, little doggy bag pullouts that you can get, and be responsible. I have three dogs, I don't let my dogs run amok, and I, you know, commend everybody that does work down there, I don't get very many opportunities to go down there, you know, currently. I don't get very many opportunities to go down there, you know, currently with my schedule, but I think that as the park grows and is developed, I think that the community could stand together and, you know, defend those areas and slow down the racetrack sort of idea. I mean, if there were more people, you know, participating and going to the park, I think that, that whole vision could change. So that's, I just wanted to offer that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any other public comment? Come on up.
My background is in recreation administration and in business. I come from a business family, and when we chose to do disc golf as part of Gateway Education's program, and as part of Wild Rivers Disc Golf Club, we thought that this would actually be part of a revitalization effort for this community. The statistics for disc golf are that it is growing six to twelve percent every year, that's faster than China, that disc golfers are moneyed, that they're willing to travel. That is why we wanted it here in Crescent City. So we wanted to, we wanted to have the Pebble Beach of disc golf courses. There are only two disc golf courses on the ocean side in the entire nation. We are one, the other one is in New Jersey, and no longer exists in Sandy. So we are solo here, all right? People from all over, you've already heard that people from all over the nation come and actually enjoy this course. People will pay, pay money, have paid money. There's even one couple that have come here, purchased a house so that they can play this course. They live in Clamath Falls, it was shocking to me. We do keep a guest register, and I will provide that if you would like it. I would like to find out why we cannot keep the course as a twenty-four hole course. That was specifically part of the plan, so that we were different from other courses. We are the biggest course in Northern California and Southern and Middle Oregon. Why would we want to lose that distinction?
Why do you think that you are?
Why do I think that we are what?
Losing it, why do you think that you're losing?
Because on the plan it says eighteen holes, not twenty-four.
Why does it say that? I can't, it's, it's number five.
Oh, I see where it says, yeah.
We've already proven that the course is a multi, that disc golf is a multi-use activity, and it can, and fits into the park as it is, and can even as it changes and grows. I'm probably almost out of time, so I would like to just state very plainly what I would like. In the final language that goes into the park master plan, I would like to see that the original number of twenty-four holes is maintained, with the understanding that the current holes and tees may need to be moved. Also, we would like the city personnel to make a real effort to understand and become familiar with the activities of beachfront park and the nonprofits and activities that support, and dovetail with the city's stated goals of bringing in tourism to the community. So that means, I think Ron Gastonow and John Williams and Catherine Murray are the people that I see down there most regularly, and actually can speak from experience. And lastly, two recommendations, that City Hall be moved into the cultural center as part of getting, mixing the, the recreation and the city together, and it will also give you guys who don't have time and are overworked, a chance to passively look over that which you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, I had a question, is, is that a misprint for the eighteen holes, or?
It can easily be changed at twenty-four.
It needs to be changed, it is twenty-four holes. Mr. Cole, that's a misprint, eighteen holes, it is the twenty-four holes. The cult, the consultant made an error on that.
You know, and again, as Mr. Cole added, it's, you know, with the understanding that if we need to move things, change things around, that we have that flexibility to do that.
Okay.
This is, you know, it's a master plan, it's a living document.
Okay. Is there any other public comment on the master plan? Yes, come on up, sir.
When I first saw this, I was concerned about, mostly about the Elk Creek area, and, and the beach frontage, being kept a quiet area. So I do see you have picnic area, and you have taken away, put, made the coastal trail more beautiful along Elk Creek, and I really like that. And I'm, I, I think with pushing the amphitheater back and recovering some of the beach, that gives you, that probably gives you enough distance. I measured it out to be approximately two hundred feet from where the revetment shoreline is now. So with that distance, and if your, if your amphitheater has a way of funneling the sound, not be open towards the ocean, but funneling the sound towards the park, I would think that would be very important. I'd like to see a decibel study done before you lock yourself into the amphitheater being on the ocean edge of the park. Right now, most of the, as you might be familiar with, most of the big events take place on the other side of the park, when we have bandstands. And so I, when I saw the bandstand on the ocean frontage part, I was a little concerned. So I'm glad to see it pushed back, and I'm, I'm glad to see bushes, which are, I would hope they would be thick bushes to be a good sound buffer, and a backing to the amphitheater, that it be, you know, funneling the sound away. This is an incredibly rich shorebird migration resting area, as if it's one of the most delightful parts of the park. And I'm happy to see a little parking area put in near the, the low-key picnicking area right by Elk Creek, because a lot of people have a lot of visual equipment when they do bird watching. One use that isn't really pointed out to, but that is a key bird watching area, and we're on the coastal birding trail guide for Oregon and California, and that corner there, looking out over those birds, is designated on those trails, so capitalize on that, and I, I think you're, you're wise to put that little parking lot right there.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I have, well, anyway.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Good evening.
My name's John Stetson. I live in the county. I'm totally opposed to this. The gentleman says, "This is what we want for the people," quote unquote. Fifty people showing up to get choices on two plans on how to do something ten to twenty years in the future is not a way to be financially prudent. These things that are for ten, twenty years in the future? What about the public in the future getting to decide? We need not lock us in to a grand plan with so many questions and so much speculation. Speculation, do we need this part here where it's covered, themes versus a different approach, integrate downtown? None of that stuff's in here. Let's work on what we can do today, what we can afford today. That's what the one gentleman said, he went to the meeting to discuss. I think that's what most people went there for. None of them went there to hear that it's been predetermined that the amphitheater will, will have a retractable cover. These things shouldn't be discussed. We're making work for the employees now, because they don't have enough to do. What is this council doing to cut the budget? Not find more revenue, you're not really trying to find that, because I didn't hear a doggone bit about revenue generation in this presentation. A feasibility study on what an amphitheater might raise for revenue, that sounds like a hell of a good idea. But I don't know if it's practical to consider until you do a feasibility study. You don't plan what for fifty people out of five thousand in the city want, saying that's what the public wants. If you really believe it, put it forward to the public for a vote, along with how much it's going to cost. How much will this cost?
Sir?
Fifty million dollars?
No, sir, this, this, continue speaking.
This justifies present-day employees, rather than cutting your budget for what's adequately planned for in realistic permitting. We have an eight thousand dollar, eight hundred thousand dollar goof, I think it was, in the sewer bill for the year, because we improperly budgeted for connections? You got a million dollar deficit in your redevelopment agency, I think? You have less taxes coming in because you're not allowed to have an RDA anymore? I think you need to look at what's here, what's today, and do what can be done today.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
My name is Matt Lawrence from Crescent City. I just had a few things to say about disc golf, just how important it is to me, and I've gotten into it, and just things to consider. I mean, disc golf is very flexible. It's really great having the whole course around the park. I get good exercise, I meet tons of people every day through it, and it's very flexible, because if somebody's playing baseball, then I won't do that hole. If somebody's, you know, in the park doing a birthday party, I'm not going to play that hole. But their schedule doesn't involve around mine all the time. So in the winter, when soccer isn't going on, I can play those parts of the course where I'm able to throw my long distances. There's a lot of complexities of this whole course, and really to, not to say that it will be done, but to put it into a small area will destroy a lot of that complexity. There's places where there's a lot of obstacles, where there are short distance drives, and I would just really like to keep it fun for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment on our master plan? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Jody Huffman. My husband and I live in Crescent City, City Limits, and I just wanted to say, we've been playing disc golf for six months. We just started, met a lot of people from all over the world, who's been watching, disc golfers, and they're just interested in what you're doing, you know, that type of thing. I think the park, the improvements that you have up there is just really fantastic. But the basic necessities need to be met for the tourists who come to your beautiful future park. The bathrooms, I think they need to be kept open. For like, maybe in the winter, in December, November, December, the public bathrooms, none of them were open. The tourists, I see them going to the bathrooms, you know, and they're trying the door, and it's not open. So if you want tourists to remain here, and have them have a positive experience in Crescent City, instead of them going out, someplace else, peeing, or whatever you may want, out in public, and, you know, the public officials arresting him, or whatever, finding him, whatever happens, like two years ago in the triplicate, there was an article in the paper that, you know, this man was peeing in the public. Well, that wouldn't have happened if, I think the bathrooms possibly would be open, so. Anyway, I think your improvement's fantastic. I can't wait for that future to happen.
Thank you.
Please keep the disc golf twenty-four hole.
Well, the disc golf is staying, great as that.
Thank you.
It's not moving. Somebody else had a comment? Come on up.
Actually, just, I'm Kirsten Randrup from Crescent City, and I just want to-
Kirsten?
Kirsten Randrup, yeah. I, I just want to make it, one more voice, just to say, thank you very much for, I came here expecting to have to kind of fight for our twenty-four hole course, and I'm really glad that we don't have to do that, and that you guys want to keep it in, because it's, it really is something that is used year-round, and constantly, and it's growing. And it's one of the best things since I've been here about twelve years, that's happened since I've moved here. And, you know, it's exciting to see you wanting to change the park and, and build a better park, and I'm really glad that you're continuing to work with the disc golf club, thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any other comment on our master plan? Yes?
Ron Cole, Crescent City, really brief. The best day of disc golf is when my disc doesn't land in a nice warm pile, so please give Mike anything he needs for that dog park.
Yes, thanks. Any other public comment? If not, I'll bring it back up to the, to the diocese here. Is there any comments from members? Did you have any? No? Okay, did you have any?
I have a few.
Sure.
For the gentleman, Mr. Morgan, I think, that just left, we do have a bridge that crosses over Elk Creek, it's just further down the, at the coastal trail, and it's closer to the highway. And I was really excited to see some young people here tonight, so thank you, kids, for being here. It's your park too, and it'll be your park for many years to come. So thank you. Oh, there he is. The other thing I wanted to mention is that this is kind of an historical event, having the planning commission and the city council meet together. I don't believe we've ever done that in time that I've been paying attention, which is at least ten years, so yay, and let's do it again. And, and I have seen the bathrooms open, so I'm not sure which bathrooms aren't open and which ones aren't, but we'll check into that, I'm sure.
We go, we go.
Okay. Good.
Thank you for that comment.
Yeah. Okay, did you have any, Mr. Hawley?
No, I just, one of the comments I would have is, is we have, we have talked about this at, at the prior workshops, and at least part of the entrance in improving the park is to bring those, those tourists off the road and give them another reason to stay in Crescent City. And that will hopefully raise revenues and, and enhance our economic viability. At the, at the workshops that we had, when we were determining how, how to proceed with this, this project, I don't know that that was the, of the highest priorities, but that certainly was one of the priorities that were sta, was stated, was that we hope to increase our tourism, and that is the, the most viable economic dollar that we, we can capture. So that, that, I just wanted to comment on that.
Okay. Did you have any? Ron, I would like you to, to try to come to our next planning commission, not this week, but if, if you would, take into, into mind this, this plan as you've seen it now, and, and how you might think disc golf fits with this master plan, and if it doesn't, would you share with us, say, hey, this doesn't work because of this, or it does work if this becomes the master plan? Here's some things, thoughts that I have, given our current course, or adjusting it and maintaining twenty-four holes, given this, this kind of layout. So, I mean, that would be something that I think would be helpful to, especially given the fact that we have a, a, a brand-new planning commission, so there's only two of us that are, that have even had the chance of having you share with us, so. Yeah, I, I'd really like, like to see that. From a standpoint of, of, fiscally, I think we have to realize that, that we're looking at a master plan. It's not set in stone. It's not, it's not designed specifically to keep somebody employed, it's trying to create a vision for the future, and how that can be a benefit to this community long-term. It's a big picture, and I think we need to keep the big picture in mind. Nobody's going out with a bulldozer tomorrow, and that can't happen. It's going to take some time. I commend the, the design, I commend all the people who, who came to the workshops. There's lots and lots of input, and there is no way we can put everything in that everybody wants, but there is obviously some big, big things that people said they wanted. wants, but there is obviously some big, big things that people said they wanted, and they're here. The big things. Who's to say that, that, that a master plan can't be adjusted as time goes? But we need something to work for. If we don't have something to work for, we're never going to be able to approach getting grant money or anything else if we don't have something in place. We're trying to put something in place, looking for the long-term, and I, I think we've, I think we've got a good start, and that's all this is supposed to be, a good start. That's all. I'm, I'm very pleased with where we are right now.
Yeah, so I attended all of the meetings that we had for public input, and so I wanna thank a lot of you that are here tonight that were at those meetings, because a lot of times, when we have public input meetings, we'll see people once, sometimes twice, but then they never come to the follow-through, and then we hear about it later. So, I love it when we have constant input from people on a process that we're trying to develop for the community, so thank you. I see a lot of familiar faces here tonight that were in those meetings. And for some of you that are new, just, you know, go check the city's website and come to our meetings and come to council meetings, because I, there's nothing better that I like to do than make a decision based on getting public input. Otherwise, I have to try to guess and do my best, and that's not always what everybody wants, so. And, and I couldn't have said it better than Blake. This is a plan. Plans are almost like a budget. They're volatile, and they are movable and flexible, but you can't, you can't complete something if you don't plan for it. And, you know, I don't, I don't think this, this plan is, you know, a hundred percent perfect. I'd like to see some things changed, but I think it's a, it's a really great start. And, and I do see a lot of the, the things on this plan that were talked about at those I've heard, I just wanted to say, I've, I hear you about the bathrooms. I get complaints about it quite, quite often, and I've, I've talked to a city manager about it a couple times. And we're gonna work on that. Some of it is staffing over the weekend, and some of it has been vandalism, and there are reasons, but we can do a better job. And I, I wanted to mention the dog park. We did talk about having it closer to an area where adults could see their kids play while their dogs were in the park. So, I don't know if there's a compromise for that, but I wanted to just honor the memory of the young lady Kaufman, Amy Kaufman, that died. That her family, actually, when I was the mayor, when we had our town hall meetings, and we discussed the beachfront and having a dog park, her family came and just talked about how important it was to their daughter, who had lost her life, to have a dog park in our community. So, I just thought it was worth mentioning. And I think, I think that's it. I think, I think Eric Taylor has done a great job tonight. Thank you for trying to bring to us what the designers had in their heads. And I think as we move forward, like you said, we're gonna be able to take one step at a time and start with small projects, and sometimes, you know, it takes a long time to get there, but this community has done that before, so I, I'm pretty happy with it.
Mr. Gastineau?
Yeah, so as Mr. Cole said, I actually use the park. I'm in there like, maybe twice a day. I try to take a walk through the park all the time. And even with the, the new walkways that we just put in there, it made it so much more accessible to everybody, and I see a lot more people down there walking all the time. I wanna see this go forward in, in small phases. I mean, if we just start out with just putting the walkways in and defining where the parks' elements are gonna go, this is a multi-use park, a multi-use plan. You can have five events going on at the same time in this park every weekend without a problem, the way that this park is set up now, I mean, on this master plan. But today's park is wide open, so you don't, can't divide stuff between what's going on most of the time. I mean, you can have like, all sorts of sports down here at the end, and you have picnic areas, and then the soccer be going, and then, of course, disc golf, they always play through where we're at, so we let them play through. It's just one of those things.
You let them?
We let them play through.
Especially when there's a gift flying at you.
Well, you should see what we're, we're wearing when they come through, but...
And how are we gonna start making money on that?
So, so you look at this, and as we go in, and this is for our future and for our future children, I think it's, it's an excellent plan, and, and that I can't wait to see it start. And I told Eric Weir that, give me a shovel and I'll start digging tomorrow. It's awesome.
Oh, and we could put speed bumps. I wanted to mention that, too, right?
On the road, if you're speeding.
Speed bumps on the road, so there's not a lot of speeding.
We could do that.
Yeah, I guess we get down, like I said, we, you get the finer details of the plans. Those are the things you incorporate in and we'll look at.
Mr. Williams, did you have any comments?
No comments.
No comments.
Well, this, this, this master plan is, is looking really nice. I attended those meetings also, and there's a lot of things here. And, you know, this, as we get the grants to, to do these things, that's why it's gonna take time to do, 'cause we're in competition with, with other, other cities in California. But I've never seen a more beautiful park anywhere in the state, and I've lived in a few places. And, you know, I actually like the location of a dog park. Dogs usually don't mix with kids, and you have to be at the park, and you should be inside the confinement of the park to keep an eye on your dog, 'cause some dogs get aggressive with other dogs. I have two dogs. Like to think they're friendly, but I don't know when they're with other dogs. So, the dog park's gonna be nice, and there's parking there for that, and hopefully people will use that part of the park for the dog park. And the kids' town, I'd love to see that expanded someday. We have the room for it right there, and the amphitheater should be great. It's really nice that all this is coming together, and it's a plan, and it's a master plan. We've never gone this far before as part of a city to, to actually plan it out, and people are right. It could be six years down the road, and maybe we didn't need that town square anymore. Maybe we, we want something else at that time that we can fund or have funded, because we're not using city funds for this. One of the things I worry about a little bit is, we only have two park employees in the city, and they take care of all of our parks. So, this, when it's completed, is gonna be a lot of work. There's more grass here, there's more areas to take care of, and hopefully our two employees can, can, can get that added on, because it's certainly not make, it's not keeping them employed, it's making more work for them, when they're already busy. But this is, this is a great master plan. Now, the, the next meeting, you meet next week or this week?
No, yeah, this won't be on, this won't be on...
This will be on, when will this be on again?
We'll be meeting Thursday, so this has to come back again for duly-nosed public meetings, so we have to have a ten-day public notice period.
So, next it goes to...
So, March, March fourteenth will come the planning commission, and I plan on bringing it back to the following council meeting.
On the twenty-first or whatever the next meeting is?
Correct. Hopefully, the designer will actually be here for that final adoption meeting.
Yeah, his flight was canceled this afternoon, so he couldn't be here. So, the next time that this is gonna be talked about, just like we did tonight, will be at the planning commission meeting on the fourteenth? Oh, I'm sorry, the twenty-first? Twenty-first of March?
No.
March, March fourteenth will be the planning commission.
March fourteenth.
And then the, the following council meeting, I'm not sure when the second meeting is.
All right. So, there'll be two more, there'll be two more times, if you have any other ideas, or you know of other people that may wanna come and look at this or talk about this. This is also on our website, correct? The map? So, take a look at it, and thank you for coming tonight to...
And I'd just like to give a shout-out to the planning commission. If you guys wanna know, if you guys wanna know what's going on in this community, we discuss these things like, three times, three months in advance. Most of the stuff comes before the planning commission, and those meetings usually only last a half hour.
Yeah.
So, just saying. You wanna figure out what's going on in Crescent City?
Yo, yo, planning commission!
Go to the planning commission.
Thank you.
Can I just, when we were talking, some of you had addressed the concern about our two employees for the park. We do have some really creative people here in the audience who have been to the workshops. For example, the labyrinth, instead of having it be a plant, like lavender or something, they've suggested that we use a cement pad, which is just zero maintenance. So, if you have any other creative ideas on maintenance, we'd love to hear those as well. And thank you for those great suggestions, you guys in the back row.
Okay. Thank you. So, we'll, we'll go back to our, our council for council items. Thank you. You can stay up if you want, or you can... Okay, we'll go back to our legislative matters on the city council items. Mr. Palazzo, do you have anything for us?
No.
None? City managers' report, do you have anything? No?
Not the same.
Okay. City council directives? Any? City council reports? We'll start with you, Mrs. Murray?
Yes, I attended the Joint Powers Authority for the airport, and mitigation is the primary focus right now for the properties that we need to turn into wetlands that we're taking at the airport, so that's an ongoing issue. We need to be able to comply with the California Coastal Commission on their mitigation ratios, so that's why it's so important. And I also attended on the eighth, the beginning, the kickoff of Mr. Epperson's basketball tournament in, in his honor. He died a little less than a year ago, and it was hosted at Crescent Elk and a couple of the other middle schools or the schools, and there was a great turnout. I talked to some kids from Fortuna, and there were kids from all over the place. We had our RDA Oversight Committee meeting on the thirteenth, and again, as mentioned earlier, we adopted the two resolutions, twenty thirteen oh three and oh four, for the ROPS and the budget. And then that evening, I attended the Pacific Shores Owners Meeting regarding the property acquisition for the airport mitigation. And on the fourteenth, I attended the Local Transportation Commission meeting, and we have, we added two special projects to that, the school zone circulation study and the priority project funds. And we also, our executive director, Tamara Layton, sent a letter to the executive director of the California Coast Transportation Commission, asking them to reconsider how they, they draw up the funding maps. Right now, they do it by population, and we'd like to have them change it to a percentage of, of funds, because we're getting shortchanged. This, this red indicates that the counties in the red here and here and here are going to lose approximately a hundred percent to, down to thirty-five percent at the best-case scenario of the funding, because of the way they're calculating right now. So, we sent a letter to the executive director and copied it to our governor and our state-elected officials. So, something to pay attention to, because we're getting shortchanged just because we're a small county. And then, the California Coastal Commission's, there's input on their strategic plan for adopting local coastal plans. The last day to submit a comment is the twenty-second of this month, so I don't know if our staff has prepared anything, Mr. Palazzo, for response?
No, we have not. I can maybe address that, and Mr. Taylor can assist. We discussed it, and we reviewed, you know, their strategic plan. Our local coastal plan, LCP, has been adopted. We have a real good working relationship, you know, with the Coastal Commission, and going through their strategic plan, we didn't, you know, see that there were any, you know, large issues that we needed to address.
Well, even a letter saying that we feel that it's a good, good, a good plan might be a good thing to do. The county approved a letter to them today. I went to their board meeting earlier this morning.
You recommended the letter.
And then, I do walk...
Can I, before you move on, can I ask more about that? What do you mean, write a letter that it's a good plan?
Well, if we don't have any issues with it, we ought to say that we agree with it or something, you know, our input.
I mean, I know, but agree with what? 'Cause I thought they were looking for...
The strategic plan.
I thought they were looking for input on their process for developing and approving LCPs.
That's what the strategic plan is.
Okay. Well, I don't think it's a good process. So, that's my personal opinion. Yes, I've been following it, yeah.
Well, then, moving on, I do walk around Beachfront Park a lot and B Street Pier in downtown, and I was thinking about the resolution that we passed in, last year, it was twenty twelve dash thirty-one, a resolution supporting the Healthy Eating Active Living Campaign. And so, I asked our city clerk, and she obliged most graciously this afternoon, short, short notice, we're, we're gonna keep this in the back of our binders, and if anybody's interested, we can, I, it wasn't online, that's why I asked Robin to copy it for me, but we could get copies for you. And I'd like to challenge people, while it's nice outside, at least to start walking maybe five or ten minutes. Start going around the block, take your kids around the block, just get out there and start moving, and so we can start being a healthier community. And Ms. Shalong and I are still on the ad hoc committee, working with Sutter Coast to keep our, our hospital local. And earlier this morning at the Board of Supervisors meeting, they adopted a resolution on the year of the child, and I'd like for the council to consider doing the same thing. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley?
Thank you. Sounds like you've been busy. I had an opportunity to meet with, with Mayor Ania and, and Mr. Palazzo. We met with John Driscoll, who is the Senator Huffman's representative here on the North Coast, and we shared our strategic plan with him?
Congressman.
Congressman, I meant, congressman. And we shared, shared our strategic plan with him. We talked about the current projects we're working on, and he may be of some assistance with some of the grant funding we're struggling with a little bit. So, I think that was a worthwhile first contact, so I appreciated that. I was involved with the meeting with the Army Corps of Engineers, where we discussed the levee and the, and the dangers associated with it, and, and we're, we're working with them, with an MOU, I think, to so that we can maybe put more signage out and, and at least reduce the danger that does exist from rogue waves and that kinda thing. So, I know some of you also attended, and you may have more to say about that. The, we, Mr. Gastineau and I and, and Mr. Palazzo, were able to go to the Housing Authority recently, and, and we got a, we got oriented to all that they do, and it's a very impressive effort they put out. They provide, they help provide housing for what, over four hundred families, four hundred and fifty families or so in our area, and it's, it's a very complex process, and they have dedicated staff, and I was, I was very impressed. The, we attended the IGRC meeting, the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, and we hadn't met for a while, so much of the meeting was taken up just trying to figure out why we were meeting and what, what our goals were. And as some of you may know, the governmental organizations don't always talk with each other in any kind of an informal way. We have our meetings, and we hopefully read something in the paper like everyone else does, or, or whatever, and this is an opportunity to share information and, and basically be a clearinghouse of information, so that misinformation doesn't occur, and that, that can be really beneficial and, and help, help with trust, which is, which is always, always best. Attended the Local Transportation Commission meeting, and Councilman Murray already spoke to that, and I followed up with the Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting, and that was a particularly interesting meeting. They went through a, the quarterly report and the first half of the year report on how they're doing fiscally, and some of you who use public transportation know that it, the public transportation rates did go up a little bit, and they're finding that we're gonna revisit the rate structure, but it doesn't look like it's gonna go up more, and maybe it'll even be reversed, we don't know. So, over the next quarter or so, we'll get the next quarterly report, and we'll take a look and see exactly how that's working. But, but they're in good shape as a result of those increases, so, so I hope you enjoy public transportation, and, and apparently the ridership is really pretty good, from what I got from the quarterly report. So, so that was a good, my first attendance at that particular group, but it was, it was really tangible, and I appreciated that opportunity. So, that's all I did.
Councilman Shalong?
Thank you. I attended the chamber meeting and also their, their most recent chamber mixer, which was for the tennis association. So, it made me think that maybe the disc golf people, if you're members of the chamber, should have a chamber mixer and teach people how to play disc golf in the summer. So, because the tennis association had, at their mixer actually got new members to sign up, to participate, just from playing out in their little tennis court, so. The chamber's also having their annual retreat on March ninth, and we'll be discussing, the board will be discussing the new position for the executive director and the job description and what that's gonna look like, so I'll be able to report back to the board after that. I am going to be able to attend, I think, with also, I think Catherine's attending, there's a meeting in Eureka to meet Congress...
there's a meeting in Eureka to meet Congressman Huffman and I have never had the opportunity to do that and it's always good to meet your, your representative, so I'm gonna take the time to do that Thursday morning and find out a little more about him and what his intentions are with our county. And I just wanted to remind everybody that one of the largest events in our community is coming up, the first weekend in March, the Crescent City J.C.'s basketball tournament. So, be prepared for 56 8th grade basketball teams and all their cheerleaders to come frequent our hotels and businesses and gas stations and it's a great, great weekend. So, yeah, I just always wanna give kudos. That's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. Gastineau?
I too attended the, the tennis associations and it was great. They got me out there with a racket and I had a good sweat going on by about 6 o'clock. So, that's what you guys gotta do, get a disc in their hands and then they'll be joining you, so.
They still?
Oh, do they? Oh, there you go, excellent. It was also a, a great meeting and tour of the Housing Authority and I thank Megan Miller for that and her staff. And then on the Intergovernmental Relations Meeting, it was, it was a really good experience talking with the harbor, the county and, and the other entities that were there. We're all, we're all working together to eliminate blight in our community and make it a better community for us to live in and also for our tourists to come into. And we're, we're working together to coordinate a lot of our projects so that we have more continuity through our whole community, including the county, city, and harbor. So, it was a very good experience. Unfortunately, they're only quarterly, but that, that's sometimes a good thing.
Yes.
With government entities, but didn't learn a lot and, and we will be talking outside of the committees as we go, so that's all I have to report.
Reminding me, can, Mr. Palazzo, under-
Directors?
Council directives, I guess. Can we get an update on the inter-agency visitor center? What's going on with that progress? Not right now, but maybe at the next meeting?
If anything, I don't know.
Yeah, if anything.
I'll, I'll update myself and bring that back to the council.
I thought you had been invited, so I thought maybe-
I've, I've been invited, I haven't att-
Did you have anything else, Mr. Gastineau?
Well, you know, I, I attended some of the meetings, my colleagues did the Local Transportation Committee, the, and the, they're working on Highway 199 and 197 and a lot of people use that roadway, trying to make it safer for us. The Redwood Coast Transit Authority that Mr. Holly talked about, we are talking about maybe reducing some fares, which is something you haven't heard in a long time, reducing something, the cost, and because the ridership is really good with them. So, we're talking about maybe doing that in the future as we see these figures come in. I also met with John Driscoll, the Congressman Huffman's assistant that helps him on, in Eureka and the North Coast. We also made him aware that our Front Street project is ready to go, the roadway. We're waiting for federal funds on that and he was going to speak with the congressman about that. And that project has been ready to go and has, as the government says, it's shovel-ready. So, maybe some of that money can be directed to Crescent City. The Army Corps of Engineers, I did meet with them, we went out on the jetty and we're talking about putting some more signs there that, to warn people how dangerous it is and, but people can still walk on it. And if they get hurt or they have to be rescued, then there may be some fines involved for rescuing them, for the rescuers having to risk their lives to save those people. So, they're not gonna, they have to walk past the signs that say it's dangerous, so that's gonna be a choice they're gonna make. One of the things that may come out of, of sequestering, that was a word I had to learn, I just call it budget cuts on March 1st, could be part to our Housing Authority. Mr. Holly just reported, what, 400 families we serve on that? That's part of the federal government's budget cutting or sequestering, which will reduce funding to housing authorities throughout the United States. And how that affects us, it will in some ways, probably by reducing the number of funds that we get to help the people that are, that are using our Housing Authority rentals. So, we're following that very closely because we'd have to adjust, the Housing Authority would have to adjust their budget for next year and probably wouldn't be able to serve as many people. So, we're hoping that Congress will get together and pass something in the next few weeks because that could, that will affect us.
Mr. Anea, the, the sequestration for the Housing Authority, I thought it was just 5%.
It's 5%, yeah, but our, our budget is, it will affect our Housing Authority though, some ways, I believe.
But I thought we wouldn't have to cut families. I thought we had enough in the administrative funds to cover the 5% so we wouldn't have to cut any families.
For this year, right?
For this year, that is my understanding.
For this year, 2030.
If it continues into next year, you know, you know, I, I'm not sure what the impact would be, but we can, you know, report back out to the council.
Well, let's hope that doesn't happen, that, we happen to have so many in our administration funds there for that, but let's hope that they, they don't cut those funds.
Yeah, as I understood it, they thought it might be able to be done through attrition, but unfortunately, the future funding of future years is based upon whatever the funding occurs in the year you're in, the, the money you're using. So, it's kind of a downward trend.
Yeah.
If we start losing 5%, then the next year goes down. So, anyway, that, that's, that's of great concern and we hope the federal government gets itself together and takes care of things.
Yeah, it's a huge, it's a huge concern. That's all I have and if there's nothing further, we're gonna adjourn till our next city council meeting, which will be on Monday, March 4th at 5:00, or 6:00 for the, for the public, 6:00 on March 4th. Thank you, thank you for attending tonight.